Good evening. I'd like to call the July 25, 2023 regular board meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Just to note that the Board met in an executive session virtually on July 12, 2023, for the purpose of discussing an employee discipline matter involving a temporary professional employee of the district. By way of attendance, all Board members are present. And just to note that Ms. Cancro and Ms. Cleary are attending tonight virtually. There are no guests and scheduled speakers tonight. Now it's time for reports. We did not meet, many of the committees did not meet in July, so the reports will be limited. So I believe next up is the superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, there are a number of matters on the agenda for the Board's consideration. Among those are the renewal of the superintendent and approval of an assistant superintendent, as well as my recommendation to the Board for an organizational structural change. Given my nearly 10 years of commitment, accomplishments, and success in Methacton School District, I approached the Board of School Directors regarding a renewal of my contract. As such, discussions over the past several months have resulted in the development of an agreement that is on the agenda for consideration this evening. In terms of the process, the district solicitor will now provide information for the public.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. In terms of that information, it's noteworthy that the public school code does require that the Board of School Directors vote upon whether to retain the superintendent of schools during the final year of the superintendent's term. We are now in that final year. Consistent with that requirement, tonight's agenda includes a vote to reelect Dr. Zerby to an additional term of office. After Dr. Zerby approached the Board about his interest in continuing his efforts here in Methacton, the Board reviewed information relative to Dr. Zerby's accomplishments during his nearly 10 years of service as superintendent. The Board then met an executive session in March, and again in April of 2023, to discuss the terms and conditions of employment requested by Dr. Zerby. The Board considered these requests in the context of Dr. Zerby's record of performance, including his most recent evaluation ratings of exceeds expectation, as well as the superintendent marketplace in Montgomery County. With regard to compensation contained within the proposed employment agreement, it is anticipated that the first-year salary under the new contract will place the Methacton superintendent at the midpoint of all superintendents in the county. The other terms and conditions set forth in the proposed agreement are consistent with other area superintendents and highly reasonable, particularly in light of the fact that Dr. Zerby is one of the two longest-tenured superintendents in Montgomery County. A similar process to this occurred relative to the proposed employment agreement for Dr. Sorgini to serve as assistant superintendent. As was the case when Dr. Zerby was most recently reelected in 2019, and when Mr. Regina was elected as assistant superintendent in 2020, the motions to take such action were added to the agenda for the regular monthly voting meeting of the Board and were not presented during a work session. The purpose of the work session meetings of the Board is to allow the school directors to ask questions, engage in debate, and when necessary, direct the administration to gather additional information in order for them to be prepared to vote on matters the following week. With respect to the terms and conditions of employment of administrative employees, these are matters that the Board has expressly permitted to discuss in the confines of an executive session. Nonetheless, in order to ensure increased transparency, the Board has consistently posted the full details of the contracts upon which it is voting, including the two contracts that are on tonight's agenda. Those have been posted to Methacton's publicly accessible website, and that is a step that is not legally required. In short, the process that has been followed by the Board relative to the superintendent and assistant superintendent appointments has been thorough, in strict accordance with the law, and consistent with the manner in which similar appointments have been made in the past. Thank you, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Next, I'd ask our AV person to put up the presentation on the screen. Members of the Board of School Directors, you have a copy of a presentation that has a slide that looks similar to this. And we are now on the cover sheet slide, okay? And so next, my recommendation to make Dr. Sorgini an assistant superintendent is supported by his commitment, professionalism, and success as a director of human resources, and allows for the following organizational structure to best support the district in the years to come. The organizational chart, as posted to the agenda in advance of this meeting, was shared previously with the Board of School Directors. I will now briefly review the rationale associated with the recommended changes. Slide two, please. First, the current organizational structure has everyone reporting to the superintendent. Slide three, the goals of the new organizational structure are as follows: to place decision-makers at the board table. This will allow Mr. Bricker, Mr. Regina, and Dr. Sorgini to help support the regular information needs of the Board while providing opportunities for principals and directors to present before the Board on an as-needed basis. And as, you know, recognized by one of our Board members earlier in the year, you know, does away with having our directors spend, you know, umpteen hours sitting in the audience when their services aren't necessarily needed. Secondly, the, excuse me, secondly, the organizational structure increases efficient use of time. The new structure will reduce the frequency of meetings to allow central office staff more regular presence in our school buildings. Third, it will create greater supervisory oversight. The new structure will allow more time and greater depth of support for teachers, principals, and directors. Next, it'll provide professional growth opportunities. The new structure allows for professional growth at a number of levels, including principals, directors, and newly-appointed assistant superintendent and current sitting assistant superintendent. It increases the thoroughness of decision-making, planning, and communication, which allows for us to provide greater detail, oversight, and communications of our decisions. And lastly, but not least, it establishes leadership continuity. It provides continuity now and into the future. Dr. Sorgini will continue to be responsible for HR duties and additional duties and a title change. This organizational structure does not require any new administrative staff. Please go to slide four. The new structure outlines the direct reports and some of the responsibilities of the superintendent. Slide five outlines the direct reports and some of the responsibilities of the assistant superintendent with primary responsibility for educational services and oversight, and that'll be Mr. Regina. Slide six outlines the direct reports and some of the responsibilities of the assistant superintendent with primary responsibilities for operational services. Again, that'll be Dr. Sorgini. And slide seven displays the new administrative structure as proposed. Again, having shared this structure in advance with the Board of School Directors, the renewal of my contract, the appointment of Dr. Sorgini to assistant superintendent, and the new organizational structure will best lead Methacton School District well into the future. That ends my report for this evening.
Dr. Zerby, excuse me. If we have questions, should we wait until 13 on the organizational chart? Or Ms. Alston, whichever, Ms. Alton, sorry, whichever you, which, when should I ask questions about this? Now or then?
We can ask, we can do questions now if you'd like, sure.
And I apologize for not asking them earlier. Sometimes you kind of need time to get your questions together. What is the organizational structure of PV in terms of their superintendent and their cabinet members? Okay, that's fine. What is the organizational structure of Wissahican?
So I think what I've shared with the Board previously, as you recall, we discussed what the best organizational structure would be for continuity sake within Methacton School District. And while there are districts like Wissahican and possibly Prokiuman Valley that don't resemble this type of structure that I'm proposing, it's not uncommon for such a structure to be provided.
No, no, and I, maybe, I don't think I'm asking my question correctly.
If you recall, I provided some of that information to the Board back when we first started, but I don't recall the exact configurations.
Yeah, but we're here to vote, so we're here to discuss. So that's fine. I don't, I don't need to know that. I just picked those. So I know about Springford, and that's the only one I know about. So Springford has a superintendent, and now they do have two assistant superintendents. So your organizational chart, when you showed it to me, made sense. When I looked at it more closely, for example, and that's why I'm sure every district does it a little differently, that's why I'm at just asking questions. So at Springford, they have an assistant superintendent of curriculum, I believe that's the title, and then an assistant superintendent of, I don't know if they call it special education or people services, I'm not sure, I could quick look, but, and that made sense to them. And I'm sure it makes sense to different organizations. When I look at this, you know, I already know what Mr., you know, kind of what Mr. Regina has done for the district, and this made sense. And I, you know, somewhat know what, what Dr. Sorgini does for the district, and it just seemed lopsided to me. That's what, that was my concern, meaning like, if a principal needs help with a staff member, then it depends, I guess, but it looks like they go to Mr. Regina. So one, two, I know, I can't, you know, count all that, but one, two, three, four, you know, eight people go to Mr. Regina for help. And that, that's just, that's just what I was trying to get at, that I, I was wondering why it was like this.
So earlier, I talked about the goals of this structure, and the goals speak to this in volume. So when I talk about, excuse me, the decision-making process, and I also talk about the supervision oversight, those are key elements, given the skills and abilities of my team, and where we're best going to be suited to support our students, our staff, and our principals and directors.
Okay, and that, that's great. Like, I think Dr. Sorgini, Dr. Walsh, Mr. Regina, Dr. Engstad, Ms. Gorla, you know, all the people that I've worked with have done, have done a great job. And I look at Ms. Gorla, who was a principal and now curriculum person, you know, and no, I'm not trying to name, you know, maybe the director of technology, and Dr. Walsh being a little bit newer, maybe don't fit in that regard, but I know Dr. Walsh worked, did really fantastic, you know, Leah at Wissahican, and has brought some great curriculum things here. But I was just wondering, was anyone else thought of for an assistant superintendent position?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question, a couple of questions. One is, I know we talked a little bit about the processes or how the organizational dynamics are enhanced by this structure. For example, Mr. Regina will be able to have more building, in-building time with some of the principals. So are there other ways that you feel that this enhances our just general organizational dynamics, like things like that?
Well, certainly, I mean, part of, part of what this also does is it takes, takes me out of doing a lot of production work. So like, when you see a presentation that comes before the Board, you know, a lot of that production work comes out of my office, my keystrokes, and allows me to push that down and allows me time in front of principals, allows me time in front of the community, allows me more time in front of parents, being in the classroom with students. So there's, there's some other added advantages to all of this, where not only will it get our two assistant superintendents more involved in the day-to-day operations within the buildings, but it also allows me the opportunity to get out of the office and be in the, in the public, and which I think is a, is a key element to improving our overall position and communication across the district at all levels.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's good, because we had talked about the Board, and we talked as a district, I think, about just that face-to-face, that in-building time is so important, and so I think that'll be an improvement. And then can you also talk about how the collaborative approach that you're going to take with the assistant superintendent? We see the, we see the job, the jobs defined in columns, but can you talk about the collaboration?
Yeah, I think it's important to know while we, while we're saying primary responsibilities for Mr. Regina will be in the educational services, and primary responsibilities for Dr. Sorgini will be in the operational services, it really allows for all three of us, working with directors and principals, to share in that responsibility, and also to share in the information needs that the Board has and that the public has, and that our staff needs. And so, and so with that said, I believe the continuity of our decision-making, the continuity of our, our communication is going to be improved with, with this structure, because it allows, it allows for decisions to be made in a way that doesn't have to wait for my schedule. And that's really, may sound selfish, but that's, that's part of the problem of the existing structure, the current structure.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from Board members? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, just to clarify a couple of things. One, actually, Mr. Summers, that the timing of the contract, is this considered the normal practice to renew, to decide to renew in the early part, and what the reasons are for that? If you could speak towards that?
Sure. So as I mentioned earlier, it's during the final year of the superintendent's contract that the school code requires that an item appear before the Board to make a determination as to whether the superintendent will be renewed, or whether the Board will entertain other candidates for the position. And I would say that it's certainly common and the case that once you're in that final year, there are discussions happening early in that year, if not starting the prior year in anticipation of that. And, and part of the reason is just that certainly if discussions do not advance in terms of a commitment being made by the district, the superintendents will need to start looking elsewhere. And certainly there are, at the moment, openings in terms of superintendents. There are reports of superintendents leaving in shorter periods of time, serving shorter terms than in the past. So certainly it's consistent with more recent trends of, once the opportunity is there to commit to retaining a superintendent, there's, there's a desire to try and do that.
Yeah. So I think there's some legalese that comes with the assistant and superintendent contracts. Can contracts be shorter than three years?
They cannot for a superintendent. The term of office of a superintendent has to be between three and five years. And generally, for an assistant superintendent, it's the same standard of anywhere between three and five years. The only exception being is that you can employ an assistant superintendent to serve out the term of the current superintendent. So if you had a superintendent with two years remaining on their term, you can hire an assistant for that amount of time, but generally it's anywhere between three and five years.
And is there a legal requirement to settle before the end of 90 days? What if there's not an agreement after, before 90 days of the expiration of the contract, what happens?
Sure. If there is, if the Board does not take action to either renew the superintendent or notify the superintendent that it's seeking other candidates, the contract for the superintendent automatically renews for a one-year period of time.
Okay. So generally, you know, certainly July is probably the earliest some Board can vote on it, when you're talking about extension, but as a general rule, would you say the normal practice is in the early part of the new school year?
That's certainly the case, and it can depend upon when a superintendent is initially hired. If they're hired at some point other than July 1st, those timeframes can be different in terms of when those time periods end. Generally, most school districts, or at least over time, do have their superintendent contracts expire as of June 30th. It's certainly the case that those contracts are discussed and arranged early within that final year. I would also say that the trend recently has been four-, five-year periods of time for the length of those contracts. It used to be the case that you'd see shorter periods of time. It certainly used to be the case that for a first-time superintendent, you tend to have three-year contracts while a Board, you know, determined whether the person was the right fit. But what we're seeing is even brand-new superintendents being hired for five-year terms.
Thank you. A couple of other comments. I believe Phoenixville has just come to an agreement with a salary that will be very similar to Dr. Zerby's, in the same range, and somebody with experience going into that district. I know that the public has expressed a lot of opinion about the, and it's, Dave, it's a healthy salary, and it's a salary that's paid by taxpayers, but it is the market rate for superintendents that perform. So you can, the public, I've gotten many comments. I know public doesn't always believe that this Board is performing, or Dave is performing, or there's certain things they don't like about Dave. I am comfortable with my decision here to support this and the reorganization and the promotion of Dr. Sorgini. The one thing I will say, Dr. Sorgini, the only big caveat is making sure you have been so involved with so many things to be able to release some of the autonomy to Dr. Sorgini and Mr. Regina to move forward with some of the changes that you're asking them to make. So that's something I'm going to keep an eye on, to make sure that there's a balance there, that you guys are working together, and, and this implementation of this, I think, moves the district forward in a positive way.
Any other comments from Board members or questions?
You know, I have more of a comment than a question. I just, can you hear me okay? Yes. All right, great. No, I just wanted to share that I am also in favor of this. I think we have truly moved forward, being on the Board for this past six years. I think we really have been making progress, and I think one of the biggest things that I think is really important, that our administration is strong, we have an opportunity for Dr. Sorgini to, to go through this professional development and be a part of being more in this team with the role of working with, you know, our facilities and our IT, so we can advance ourselves, that we really can excel in that area. But I also think having Mr. Regina truly being involved with pupil services and the education will allow a lot of coaching, mentorship, collaboration, so that we can excel to the level that we all agree that we want to be at. So I do feel very confident with this new structure that we have, and I'm very excited that we have truly taken the time these past several months, like, like we have shared, that this is something we thought through, we were mindful, and we, we look at where the future, where we want Methacton to be. And I have full confidence behind our administrative team and the leadership of Dr. Zerby, that we will continue to strive forward and accomplish the things that I think, as a community, as teachers, students, that we want to excel in. So I just want to say that I am, I am in favor of this.
Before we go any further, I, it's, I'll take blame here. I just had a question about the org chart. I feel a little uncomfortable going out of order. I just wanted to know when I was supposed to ask about the org chart, because I think we should comment and ask our questions when we're at that agenda item, because I have some, I don't want the comments to be, I just had a question about the org chart, and I didn't know when to ask that. So if no one minds, I would prefer to, to talk about the things when they're up on the agenda.
Being in Zoom is not very easy to, sorry.
That's okay, so noted. Does anyone else have anything to wrap up, since we did give some an opportunity? Ms. Perdue.
And I do, I think my comment was going to be at the org chart also, just because when you look at the org chart, based on the way that it's structured now, I still feel, and I think it's explained, we all understand, Dr. Sorgini is director of human resources, and now would have those directors of facility and technology under his umbrella. I think when you look at the reporting structure of it all, it is a bit, I don't think it's fairly even out as far as the way that it's set up. And I, I struggle with accepting the org structure, because then I think the question comes into play where, and I will say this goes back probably to 2020, when we decided to put an assistant superintendent in place, where it was really supposed to provide them an opportunity so Dr. Zerby can have the opportunity to do some of the things that maybe he mentioned today. I think we're here again in the same position, where we're putting another organization in structure in order for Dr. Zerby to have the opportunity to do some of the things that that he mentioned again. And I just don't know how we have to keep shifting organization structure in order to get that. And I'm just wondering, how many assistant superintendents do we need to have in place in order to get that? And that's my struggle with the org structure, the way it's proposed now.
Thank you. And yes, we, we did move things a little bit out of order in the agenda, so I, I do acknowledge that. And the reason we did that was to get these discussions so that we could have this information before the public comment on board action items.
No problem. I just wanted to make sure we all knew that there would be discussion at the time on the agenda as well. Thank you.
Correct. Yes, we will have further time for discussion when that motion is on the table. Thank you. Okay. Anything else from Dr. Zerby? Okay. Then we will move on to public comment on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items. Any public comment on board action items this evening?
You guys know who I am. There's no need to call the cops on me this time. I'm a taxpayer, and I think this is absurd. There's people right now in the township that don't make as much as what you're about to get a raise. And then you're going to get that every year, you're going to get how much? All right. There's senior citizens in the community. Remember inclusive, we're all together, right? No, we're not. You do this for me. That's a bunch of BS, and it always has been. And I've seen through you since day one. The money you're about to make and the people paying, so there's people that aren't, that they don't make 40 grand a year, but they're going to take money out of the little bit that they make, and they're going to make sure you get it. Inflation and people struggling, be damned, pay the man, right? Is that how this works? So I still have a problem, and no one's answered my question. When you mass these kids up at the outdoor dance and they couldn't dance with each other, and then you guys had an award ceremony and you're all hugging each other? There's a word, and it's called hypocrisy. So I have friends, three, they're no longer in the school. Why? Because they're looked over. I'm not going to bring up their personal stuff here, but it's serious stuff. The bullying that goes on in the school, it's never dealt with. Is there still nationalized, national recognized school of excellence? Is that still out front? Because it wasn't when we went to school. Is it still there? How are the grades? Because it sounds like you guys want to play...
Sir, if you could please keep your comments to, to items that are to be voted on, and at the end...
Okay, this is, this is, so his raise? Can you justify your raise? And I don't want to hear it's the market. Because if you're really community, I'm here with, and I stand with all my people, all the citizens, all the taxpayers, is who I'm here and I'm speaking for, can't believe they're not here. Can you justify it when everybody's out there struggling, but you think you're real important, you should get that much more money? I don't see how that really works when you've been ramming down our throat and what you've done to the school about inclusive, inclusive, and, and everybody's equal in equity. It's not, because you're above us, and we can see through it, and it's wrong. Senior citizens are going back to work because they can't pay their bills, but inflation, be damned, pay the man. It's wrong. I don't know how you sleep at night. I get it, you're a doctor, everybody's doctors up here. Cool. And, and I'm sure you worked hard to get where you're at. But on a human level, I'm a small business owner, okay? And people call me for a service. And I'm still not where I should be with my prices, because on the human level, we're all struggling. And I would not do that, because we're just citizens. But we pay the bills, you guys are going to do whatever you want. That's probably why nobody's here. So God bless you, have a good night, it's wrong. And you can make faces at me again, dude.
Thank you for your comments.
Dave, he's right. How do you sleep at night, talking about his contract? We aren't PV with Sahik in Phoenixville or Methacton. You know, the teachers' union uses that strategy to ladder their salary increases. Apparently, we've got that going on now for administrators. I don't think a lot of you guys know what Dave really does, but I do. I just went through about 6,000 emails from the Methacton Education Foundation. So no wonder you're, got Mr. Sergini taking up some of the slack, so you can devote even more time to that organization. Seven board seats are up in this November's election. Why not wait till the board changes and there's a different board in control in, in five months? Let them decide whether to hire you back. Why not? Let the people decide. They'll put the people in to decide whether you stay or you go. You should have had a discussion about this at the work session. Kyle, I don't buy your explanation. You know, you were worried about what everybody else up here was thinking. The work session's for the public too, for us to listen and learn and discuss. You forgot to leave, put us into the equation. By my calculations, you got the financial compensation wrong. You guys came up with 250 grand. Not really. It's not, that's not it. After reviewing, reviewing thousands of emails regarding the Methacton Education Foundation, I estimate Dr. Zerby does roughly 500 to 1,000 hours of work for the foundation every year. Every year. You know, Liz, you're on a lot of emails too. So what about that? Where does that get figured into the compensation? Are we footing the bill for the 1,000 hours for the foundation? Because what should really happen is you should take off, do at least half, take it, take it off the salary and let the Methacton, the foundation, pay the rest of your salary, because you're doing all the work for them. I don't, I can't find any evidence that you ever informed the board about your time and activities for the Methacton Education Foundation. That was in your contract. I'll give you an example of some of the stuff you do for the foundation. Here's an email from the president of the foundation. "I want to pass along some excellent news I just received from Dr. Zerby. He met this morning with Fidavia and made the ask for them to be a $15,000 sponsor for the Apex Dinner. They agreed." How much did, you know, I'm just trying to put in for that? Whole contract has to be redone, should not be voted tonight.
"I'm here this evening to speak about items 10A, 10B, and 13A. The reelection of the superintendent, the election of the new assistant superintendent, and the proposed organizational chart. I stand before you all to ask you to vote against all of these items, even though we'll know they'll pass 9-0. Even my 10-year-old daughter said to me this evening, 'I'm wasting my time coming here tonight.' But I told her, 'It's very important for us to stay informed on what's taking place and to speak up when you think something is wrong.'" "Less than three years ago, you approved the creation of the first assistant superintendent role. At that time, I came before you, because this district is focused on DE and I. Yet you chose to hire another male into an administrative role, despite the teaching profession being dominated by females. At that time, I was not convinced of the need for that assistant superintendent role. However, now, I'm glad Mr. Regina is in it, as he has demonstrated a great deal of talent. Unlike Dr. Zerby, Mr. Regina is extremely attentive to developing relationships with the staff, the parents, and members of the community. He's very responsive and personable. So instead of renewing Dr. Zerby's contract almost a year early, please wait until we get closer to the end of his term, and instead consider promoting Mr. Regina into that role. The proposed org chart indicates that with the creation of this second superintendent role, the majority of the responsibilities that were assigned to Zerby will now fall to these new positions. And as Ms. Perdue said, what is it going to take to get Dr. Zerby to do the work that he's hired to do?" And that leads me to my next question. Why has his compensation so drastically increased? Based on the 2019 contract and the set increase for meeting expectations, his salary is about $226,000 today. So why are you awarding him a new contract in the amount of $249,000? While he proposes an organizational change that reduces the amount of work he does? Can you help us understand how you evaluate his performance and, and you give him a meet expectations every year? Where Mr. Summers came up with him exceeding expectations, I'd like to understand that too, because the website today clearly states he met expectations. And don't reference the items noted on that superintendent evaluation page, it's useless. What data are you using to assess the performance against the goal for student growth and achievement? How are you measuring HR management and community relations? Have you surveyed his staff or the taxpayers to gauge our satisfaction with his performance and the performance of the district? We've lost nearly 1,000 students, if you look at the enrollment report, since Dr. Zerby took over. So given the shrinking size of the student body and the shrinking size of his responsibilities, it doesn't feel like a right decision to renew his contract, especially with the $23,000 salary increase. Thank you."
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else for public comment on board action items this evening? All right, seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the special meeting and work session meeting minutes from June 20th, 2023, and the regular meeting minutes from June 27th as attached? Mr. McGinnis? May I have a second? Mr. Winters? Thank you. We have directors attending virtually, so all motions will be voted on by roll call this evening. Any questions or comments about this motion? Seeing none. All right, let's go, Ms. Kankro?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, that passes 9-0. Thank you very much. Next, we have fiscal items. Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Madam President. This month, for your approval, we have the list of bills, the treasurer's report. There are no budgetary transfers. There's two items under the Eagleville project. The first one is a credit of $9,046.70 for unused allowances. The second is a change order for Wright Flooring in the amount of $15,159, due to the need for a leveling mixture for the flooring. And then finally, there's, under the Planetarium project, we have a change order for $2,901 for additional welding that was required for the load points.
May I have a motion to approve all fiscal items as presented? Discussing. She said there's none.
Yeah, Mr. Booker, you men, mentioned that under item 9C, the budgetary transfers, that there were none. Is that also the case for the list of bills and treasurer's report, that there are no items to be approved?
Yes.
Okay. So there are, although there are items A, B, and C that typically appear on the agenda, there is no action under those items. It's only under items D and E.
Thank you for that clarification. So may I have a motion to approve all fiscal items as presented, Ms. Graff? May I have a second, Mr. Ruckstall? Any questions or comments? Mr. Winters?
So the, those list of bills, the treasurer's report, the budgetary transfers will be reviewed, doubled up in the month of August, as we have done in months where the meeting has been early in the month that Tim hasn't been able to get the reports out. So similar in that manner.
Any other questions or comments? I have a question about the flooring at Eagleville. That's part of the new floor that we're, is this something else, or is this part of the flooring issue that we've been having?
Yes, the flooring issue that we've been having. We, we approved a, a change to have, to receive some of the, the, the money back from the original flooring allowance to use towards putting in LVT, luxury vinyl tile. And as such, once the floor was, once, once the tiled floor was removed, it was discovered by Wright, the vendor, that a leveling compound with an adhesive would have to be applied in order for the LVT to be properly installed. And that's what this represents.
Can I ask why it wasn't properly leveled when the first installation of tile happened? Like, like, or should we go, I mean, is there a way to recoup this from the original flooring vendor? Do you know, I mean, this just seems like we're recouping some money, yes, to put in a different floor, but now we're not recouping as much money because we have to do extra work. But it, it seems like we're being a little short-changed here. So I just had that question.
Yeah, I think we're, I think in, in total, we were spending about $5,000 more than what we would have received in total back, in order to put the leveling in and, and put the, the adhesive for the leveler to, to bind to the existing concrete floor. So with that said, it wasn't discovered until the tile was actually removed, until the, the new flooring vendor observed what was underneath there with the assumption that there was greater depth and there wasn't as much issue with the floor as, as originally thought. But you can't, you couldn't really tell that until you removed the floor. So the, the quote that we originally received from the vendor did not include a leveling, but when they saw it, in order to get the work done properly, it required that. So at the time, the decision was made. It was, in fact, the floor, the tiled floor was removed down to the base in order to start school on time. This was the, the most appropriate fiscally responsible approach to putting the floor in place.
Was there an expectation, would, would the usual work of the floor have, if, if the original vendor had done the tiled floor per specifications, when that tile was brought up, should it have been ready and not need to have this leveling?
No. The, the, the problem with the existing base floor was that even if they were to put leveling down for the terrazzo tile, the tile would have floated much higher in terms of possibly three-quarters of an inch to an inch higher than the budding floor in the hallway and in the offices. So while it was laid twice, the terrazzo tile was laid twice, it was laid twice without a, a leveler, so that it could be floated across the room properly to meet all, all the areas. But as many of you have witnessed, both of those installations were poorly done, and it would not be a, 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 a collection of work that anyone here on this table would accept, including myself. So we made a decision, going through property committee, that going with a, a third-party flooring expert, someone that we trust, certainly we, we brought on Doug Kenwood, who also had previously in his district worked with Wright Flooring and could, and trusts the opinion and expertise involved. Right now, the board will receive photos in this week's Friday memo, showing you how well the floor has been laid. And to this point, we're happy it's not fully complete yet, but, but we're happy with the progress.
Yeah, I guess my only comment is, it's not so much about what needs to be done to lay the floor properly, but just the cost. I mean, we were trying to recoup something out of this terrazzo.
We were.
But it, you know, I guess, unforeseen.
It was unforeseen. The con, again, Wright Flooring could not predict what the floor was, not having seen the base of the floor prior to the terrazzo being laid down. So we, we made many attempts to have the, the general contractor not only remove the tile, but come back several times to clean up spots, and they were very responsive. So they got it down to the base coat of what Wright had expected and what we all expected from the quote that we received from Wright in the beginning. Wright, as, as, as professional as they are, they said, if they were to lay the tile, we would not be happy and we'd be asking them to put the tile up. So this is the proper application for what I believe the board and our community expects, even though we are spending about $5,000 more in the end. And, and maybe, you know, we've had a lot of discussion, maybe the design originally wasn't right in terms of putting the terrazzo tile and giving the, the depth challenges. But that's, you know, that's not something we're, we're currently all in the middle of. We're in the middle... in terms of putting the terrazzo tile and giving the depth challenges. But that's, you know, that's not something we're currently all in the middle of. We're in the middle of trying to make sure that we're ready, put the proper floor in, and be able to open school at an appropriate timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on fiscal? All right, seeing none. Let's start our roll call vote. Ms. Cancro. Ms. Cleary.
Yes.
Ms. Graff.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Perdue.
Yes.
Ms. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckstall.
Yes.
And Mr. Winters.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That motion carries nine to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we have personnel items.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, for your consideration, we have the following items. Re-election of the superintendent, election of the assistant superintendent, one resignation administrator, Dr. Susan Angstad, director of pupil services for retirement effective January 3rd, 2024. For the past 16 years, first as supervisor of special education and then director of pupil services, Dr. Angstad has worked tirelessly on behalf of the students, families, and staff of Methacton School District. Dr. Angstad's dedication to the academic, social, and emotional growth and overall well-being of our students has made a positive difference in the lives of countless children and families in our community. For many of our students, Susan has watched them grow from young children just entering our schools in kindergarten through all levels of a Methacton education and on to being successful young adults. Her profound and genuine depth of caring has been felt by all with whom she interacts. To her colleagues, Susan has been a supportive mentor, a trusted professional guide, and an unfailing support. Dr. Angstad's legacy in Methacton School District will be one synonymous with compassion and inclusivity and the indelible imprint of a superior, comprehensive Methacton education that she has fostered for all Methacton students. The entire Methacton family expresses our gratitude and appreciation to Dr. Susan Angstad as we offer our heartfelt wishes for all the very best in retirement. Thank you, Susan. One resignation professional, Kathy Lebedensky Penzac, special education teacher at Skyview. We thank Kathy for her service to the students of Methacton and we wish her well. One resignation classified, Kevin Burke, power professional at Eagleville. We thank Kevin for his service to the students of Methacton and we wish him well. One employment professional, Alexa Stern, special education instructor at Skyview. We welcome Alexa, a Methacton alum, home and we look forward to the good work that she will do with our students at Skyview. One employment classified, Lourdes Gonzalez, recess assistant at Woodland. We welcome Lourdes to the Methacton family and look forward to the good work that she will do with the students at Woodland. We have one change of status classified, Laura Lopez, from office assistant at Eagleville to secretary to the guidance office at the high school. We thank Laura for taking on this new position. Three uncompensated leaves professional, Rebecca Wyble, special education instructor at Skyview, Erica Brown, third grade instructor at Arrowhead, and Jenna Wetzel, special education instructor of the high school, each as noted. One uncompensated leave classified, Donna Peyton, secretary to the assistant principal at Skyview, as noted, and supplemental contracts for fall coaches, curriculum department work, pupil services department work, and one additional room movement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. All right, may I have a motion to approve personnel items as presented?
I would like to take a few separately, please.
Oh, okay.
I'm fine... I wanted to take A, B, and C all separately. I'm fine with D and D through P on their own.
I'm sorry, you want to take Dr. Angstad's retirement separately?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just have some questions about that.
Okay, thank you. Then let's do 10... We'll start with 10A then. May I have a motion to approve item 10A under personnel?
Before we start with the motion, I don't... I haven't done this probably... I've only probably ever done this once before. I was wondering how anyone feels about tabling, not in a bad way. I have been part of our discussions with Dr. Zerby on his renewal of his contract. I am 100% fine with the salary. Just as Mr. Winters brought up, Phoenixville just literally hired someone this week from Scranton to 45, you know. I have no issues. I just... When I did this before in October 9th, I've only ever done this once before. The biggest job of the board is to hire the superintendent and to renew the superintendent's contract. And I have... I'm a supporter of Dr. Zerby. I just need... I personally, and I don't know how anyone else feels, need a little more time to... I was comfortable with the October timeframe we did in 2019. I just with this type of decision, in 2019, it was not on the work session agenda on October 15, 2019, and it was on the... The regular board meeting agenda on October 22nd, 2019. I voted to renew. I'm leaning towards voting to renew. I just would prefer a little bit more time. So I would prefer to table it versus vote no. I don't know how anybody else feels about tabling.
Okay, so the tabling should be done within the motion. So let me get... We'll get the motion during the discussion. We can... If tabling comes up and someone would care to vote that way, but...
Okay, and then maybe it's postponing till August or September. I certainly don't want to belabor this. A lot of the times, like Mr. Sommers said, we do this because we want to keep our people. And everything happens in the summer, right? I don't want anyone leaving. But I just want to make sure all our Ts are dotted and our Is are crossed.
Okay, thank you. So let's get a motion on the table to move into second. And then within that discussion, if we are talking about tabling as was brought up, then we can have that motion within this. So can I have a motion to approve? Mr. Winters. And may I have a second, Mr. McGinnis? So the motion is on the table. It's time for discussion. Any discussion around this? Yes, Ms. Perdue.
And I can start the discussion reference to we're discussing 10A, the reelection of the superintendent. And I will say, I wasn't here in 2019 when we renewed the contract. But during my time here, and I'm going to make this a summation of my time here working in the district in the capacity of a school board director, I do not feel comfortable at this time proceeding with renewing the superintendent's contract. And I'm okay if the decision is to table it. I think we asked the question, we were provided information that we have 90 days until that time. And I don't know what the big rush is. I think there were some discussions. I unfortunately was unable to make it to one of those due to an incident getting home. And I think I've heard many different things at this time. If the motion was to go forward, I cannot support the contract. And I will prefer that it's tabled.
Any other discussions? Ms. Graff.
Yeah, I just wanted to... There has been a lot of comments tonight. And I just wanted to at least go forward with, I am supporting Dr. Zerby's contract renewal because in the short time that I've been on the board, I have seen things that I think people who may be in the community may not necessarily get to see because they're not, you know, sort of in the thick of it. And I also think it's really important in the last term of his contract, Dr. Zerby has had the opportunity to oversee two large construction projects for the district, the Eagleville Elementary School construction project and also the Arrowhead Elementary School project, both of which are within my purview on the committee I serve on. And both projects were completed within the budget. I think that when we have capital projects and we're looking at, you know, budgeting, it's really important for us to stay on track. I also heard comments about our annual budgets and the impact that Dr. Zerby's contract and his increases will have on the community. So let me just go back and talk about the budget for a second. Because under Dr. Zerby, he has exemplified fiscal responsibility with respect to our annual budgets. And for anybody who's not aware, I think it's really important to note that the millage increases over a five-year period, the most recent five-year period, have been some of the lowest in Montgomery County. Methacton actually ranks fourth from the lowest in terms of the amount of the millage increase. So the only three districts that are less in terms of their tax increases over that five-year period are Pottstown, Potts Grove, and Norristown. So when we're talking about the impact of the budgets and the costs that we're talking about on our community, these impacts are kept to a minimum under his watchful eye. And anyone who thinks differently can go ahead and find the information. It's readily available on the board presentation documentation that was presented during the budget cycle. Now, the other thing I want to point out there is when we're fourth from the bottom in the lowest, that means 17 other school districts in Montgomery County, specifically in Montgomery County, had higher millage increases over the same five-year period. Some had almost double the amount of increase over that five-year period. So I don't think we can say that we're not working to operate within a strong budget. And I don't think we can say that Dr. Zerby's contract is going to be so harmful to the community and the public and take away from our teachers and our students. The other thing I wanted to point out here is while we're operating within this budget, Dr. Zerby has also been able to lead the effort to provide our teachers with a new contract that allows an increase in our teacher salaries for starting teachers and also increases salaries for our existing teachers, all while doing that still within the budget. So I think for those reasons, I can't see that he's not fiscally responsible. And for me, that's an important component of this. As we move forward, the facilities components that we looked at a couple of weeks ago are going to require us to do some work within the district. Our buildings are going to need repairs and maintenance activities conducted. We're going to need to have funds available to do that. So when we balance our budget, it's really important for us to be able to have those funds available to do these other projects. Whether they're small or large, we still need to do it within a reasonable, fiscally responsible budget. And I think under Dr. Zerby's direction, this administration has held to that kind of fiscal responsibility that I'm looking for. But I think it also provides the community with stability and assurance in knowing we're giving our students what they need, we're paying our teachers well, and we're also trying to maintain and keep the district in good repair, all things that are going to make our district better and stronger.
And I'm sorry to jump in. I just wanted to make it clear. And I can... I'm going to name some... I have no issues with the job Dr. Zerby is doing. I could add on to that. We call this a board of 10, and he is one of the 10. He has dealt with many board resignations, which is not easy to fulfill those roles. He has dealt with COVID, which was huge. He's one of the hardest-working people that I personally know. We've talked to him quite a bit about delegating. That is why we are, you know, interested in an org chart. So please do not think that my request to table is anything a lack of vote of confidence. It is that I have now sat here for almost eight years, and this will be the second time I do this. And out of respect for the huge decision it is, I need another month. So tabling it is in my... For myself, and I'm only one person, and I respect that eight other people might feel differently. What people don't understand about being on this school board, and it's in every school board in Pennsylvania, it is very difficult to make some of these decisions in the position that we are in. The nine of us do not work for Methacton. We do not work for Methacton. We are not involved in cabinet meetings. We are not involved in the leadership retreat. We are not involved in one-on-one meetings with teachers. I do not communicate with anybody on this staff unless I ask Dr. Zerby first, unless, of course, I'm calling someone as a parent. So I just need 30 more days to... Or I don't know how many days till the August meeting to cross my Ts and dot my Is. Because I don't work for Dr. Zerby, and I need to give myself as much time as I need. I am happy to do this a little earlier. Mr. Sommers' explanation made perfect sense. We do this exactly because I sat in that MCIU legislative breakfast where three superintendents spoke, one of them being ours. And I value his time and the work that he's done. I just am asking for 30 more days.
Thank you. Can I check in? Are there any comments or questions from...
Go ahead.
My only comment is I understand and I hear what you're saying, Andrea. But at this time, I don't feel necessary that we should table the topic. That's just how I feel.
Thank you. Checking in with Ms. Cleary.
Sorry, who's still on mute? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I respect everything that I heard from Andrea and Samira about the need for time. My comment would be that I don't. I know I've been on the board for a very short period of time, but we've had a lot of discussion. And so I don't need any additional time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. McGass.
Yeah, I just want to comment, obviously, on Dr. Zerby. You know, coming towards the end of my four years here, it's been a heck of a four years. And to question the job he does, I raise my hand to that, right? So we all live in this, everyone's got to be perfect and do it exactly the way I want them to do. And there's nine people up here, and I'm sure there's nine different variations of that. But leading a school district through a global pandemic while basically rebuilding one elementary school and really, from the ground up, rebuilding another elementary school and keeping all those plates in the air has been nothing short of astounding to me. So, and Ms. Reese, I'm sorry, I have to push back on you. I work for the Methacton School District because I chose to work for the Methacton School District. I ran and got elected to do work for the Methacton School District. Very proud of this district. I'm a graduate, as we all know. So to say, oh, I don't work for them, it's... That's offensive to me. We all... Hold on, you had your turn. We chose to do this work. Nobody put a gun to our head. Did it work out the way we all thought it would? Probably not. But we do a lot of work for this. Is the work that we do dwarfed by what Dr. Sorgini, Mr. Regina, Dr. Zerby do? Of course it does, let alone the work the teachers, the administrators do. Our work here is dwarfed. But to say we don't work for them and to say, well, I don't work for them. I'm speaking for myself. I absolutely, by choice, pridefully work for this district.
Just to... I work, and the way you're using work as well. And I'm very proud and not what I meant. What I meant is you and I do not sit in cabinet meetings. We do not sit and handle parent conferences. We don't get paid by the district and have an employee contract with the district. That's all that I meant. And I'm very proud to be here and very proud that I have three students attending this district and would be very happy for any of the people, administrators in this room, to be a part of their lives.
Thank you. Mr. Sommers, may I just ask? The subject of Dr. Zerby's evaluation process came up a little bit. Can you speak a little bit on that, on the process and some of the parameters of that evaluation?
Sure. So by law, the contract for a superintendent has to have what are called objective performance criteria within it. And so there are various areas of functioning within the school district. Those are all listed with... Those are all listed within the superintendent's contract, and they are assessed. There was a question during public comment about, on the website, it indicates either yes or no, whether those objective performance criteria are met or not. And that's correct, that the law states that there needs to be a determination, yes or no, have those, on an annual basis, performance criteria been met? And the answer has always, for Dr. Zerby, been yes. In addition to that, there is a more nuanced evaluation or ratings that are given on a scale of four within the evaluation process itself. And certainly, most recently, Dr. Zerby's been rated as exceeding expectations as a part of that overall, more nuanced, four-level evaluation. So that evaluation takes place on an annual basis at a minimum. Certainly, I think the board has discussed doing more frequent evaluations, maybe less formal, a give-and-take with the superintendent about goals, priorities, those sorts of things. But at a minimum, there is a, an annual sit-down evaluation where the board, in executive session, meets to receive feedback from all board members on all areas of functioning, provide an overall evaluation, and then there's a follow-up with Dr. Zerby to provide that specific feedback to him. So it is a fairly in-depth process that certainly, throughout the course of, and one thing I would note is that, Dr. Zerby, the proposed contract does say that modifications to that, the overall process, may occur throughout the term. So certainly, if the board desires to adjust certain goals or, you know, the way in which the superintendent is assessed, that can occur throughout the term of the superintendent.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions or comments on item 10A? Ms. Graff.
Yeah, I just, I have a hard time with the idea of tabling this item. I think that the board has spent a significant amount of time to discuss the review and the contract, and we've gathered input from all board members. Everyone has had ample time, months of time, to provide that input and gather whatever additional information they needed to make this decision. And I also think that if you've been on the board for a long period of time, you've seen the work that Dr. Zerby does, and I'm not sure that another 30 days is going to make a difference. So I would encourage us to move forward.
Any other questions or comments? Virtually? No? We're all set?
So I, I disagree, and I ask for the consideration for tabling. So I'm going to ask now for, to make a motion to table. And as I mentioned before, I cannot support this contract right now. So I will ask for a motion to table, and the board, it's the will of the board to decide.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table. We're going right to a vote to table, a roll-call vote.
And just to be clear, a vote yes would require, would indicate that you wish for the matter to be tabled for a subsequent meeting. A no would be that you do not wish to table this item and that you wish to vote on it tonight.
So I will proceed with a roll-call vote on the motion to table. Ms. Cancro?
No.
Ms. Cleary?
No.
Ms. Graff?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckstall?
No.
Mr. Winters?
No.
And I'm a no. So that motion does not pass. That was seven to, two to seven, I'm sorry. So we are back to our original motion on the table, which is number 10A, the reelection of superintendent. There's no other questions or comments. We will go to the roll-call vote.
I have one quick question. Kyle, Mr. Summers, I know Ms. Graff thinks that I'm wrong to need more time, and I respect that. And so do I, may I abstain because it's, I'm only, because I need more time? Or do, is it better to vote no? Because it's not, I don't want anyone, I don't, I don't want the wrong message sent.
That's certainly within your discretion to decide. The only required abstentions are under the Ethics Act if there's a conflict. Certainly, that's not the case here. But I think it's within each board member's right to vote yes, no, or to abstain if they deem that it's appropriate in a given circumstance.
Okay. All set? All right, we're going to a roll-call vote on item 10A, reelection of superintendent. Ms. Cancro?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
No.
Ms. Reese?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
I'm a yes. So that is 7-1-1, correct? 7-1-1 is the vote for reelection of superintendent, and that motion passes. Thank you. Next is the election of assistant superintendent. May I have a motion? Mr. McGinnis? And a second, Ms. Graff? Any questions or comments on 10B?
I have been here, and I value all of Dr. Sergini's work 100%. And again, I'm in this conundrum because usually, when you have a new position, you interview for that position. So my only concern is I'm not sure if there's other people in this organization that wanted the job. And I feel like we kind of did the org chart to fit the job and the awesome person. So there's nothing wrong with that at all, because I would like to see, you know, Dr. Sergini in, in the role or in our district or whatever. But I just, my only concern is, was there a different way to do this? And was everyone given an opportunity for that job? So that's kind of where I am. And what stinks, again, about the board, and I, I'm sorry, you know, usually, these meetings, you know, you, you know, you want the facilities, you ask the questions about the facilities, you ask the questions about the curriculum, but personnel is tricky, right? Because we can't, you know, I have no issues with the personnel decisions, but it's like, we can't discuss these things in public, and it makes it really, really difficult. And it makes me uncomfortable. And it's, we've run into these problems very rarely, but we ran into them at the very beginning of the board when I was on this board, and we had a similar, we had a situation. So I have all respect and confidence in Dr. Sergini. I just don't know if there were other people in our organization who wanted to be assistant superintendent.
All right, thank you. Thank you for those comments. Are there any other comments or questions? Ms. Perdue?
And I will go back to my same comment before in 2020, when we made the position for assistant superintendent. I think I was very much in opposition of actually creating a position and providing a position instead of making it a fair opportunity for anyone within the administration to have the opportunity to be, to be considered for the position. For that same reason here today, I'm not in favor of the second assistant superintendent position.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Zoom? No? Okay. All right, seeing none, we will go to a roll-call vote again. Ms. Cancro?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
No.
Ms. Reese?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
I am a yes. So that motion passes 7-1-1. Thank you. Next, we have 10C, resignations administrator. May I have a motion to approve item 10C as presented? Mr. McGinnis? May I have a second? Mr. Winters? Questions or comments on 10C, the resignation of Dr. Engstad? Ms. Reese?
Um, I don't know if anyone can answer this question, so I'm not sure if you can or not, but was anything done to keep Ms., Dr. Engstad here a little longer? Any answers to that?
I believe that's a matter of personnel. If it's something we want to discuss, we'd have to call an executive session, and I'd be glad to share that with you.
Um, it's, it's okay, I guess, because I'm not going to say no, or I might abstain. I thought Dr. Sergini did an incredible job, you know, bringing up. I just wanted this separate because I didn't know the answer to that question.
Ms. Perdue?
And I, I think, as you can hear, Ms. Reese is emotional about it. I mean, during my time here with Susan, I, I strongly believe you've put a lot of things in place when we think about creating a safe environment for our special education students. And I know that is something that we're going to miss, because you've put a lot of things in place. And I believe even recently, you were working with the Special Education Alliance to get them in a good place. And I think when I heard of this resignation, it almost gave me pause because it was, did something happen? That was my first, that was my first thing, what happened? What made you change? And I understand, I know you have a lot going on in your personal life, and I don't think it's, it's our position to deny resignation if it's out of your own free will. But I do question that just because of the work that you had going. And a part of me kind of felt like we would have heard about it on the board just to say, hey, by the way, and because we didn't hear that, I almost questioned. And I think I made phone calls to try to see, did something happen? Was there anything that we could have done? And the question was asked today, was there anything said, right? It's a bit disappointing to hear, and it don't have to be in an executive session, but within the administration, the question could have been asked, is there anything we can do to make you stay, right? Because, yes, it's a retirement, but maybe there's also reason for it being so sudden. And I think that wasn't done, and I mean, maybe it's the fault of the administration, and maybe it's the fault of the board, right? But to have this appear on the agenda without us knowing, and I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that will, that will be left, and you leave a very big shoes to be filled. And I, I'm really, I'm sorry to see you go. I'm sad to see you go. And I hope it is really, at the end of the day, is of your own free will, and it's a decision that you're making just because you've got, you know, you feel like I've done my time here at Methacton, but it's hard knowing some of the work that you recently started with the, the group to see that all of a sudden, you're making the decision to go. And I know we still have you till the end of the year, but it, it is a big shocker to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue, for stepping in. Dr. Sergini did a phenomenal job, and that just, Dr. Engstad is someone I have worked closely with for eight years, not on a, not every day, not all the time, but in every single education committee for eight years. And when we think about all the things that we have done, all the things I'm proud of for my work with the Methacton School District that I have worked for, for eight years, Dr. Engstad has been a part of that. The REACH program, the REACH program, which she single-handedly brought to us, and she single-handedly explained and advocated for. I don't think people realize the amount of help she has given children, the relationships she has built with families, the relationships she has built that has created a positive, loving environment for the children of those families. And it is hard to accept this retirement. And that's, that's why I wanted to take it separately. I wish more would have been done to keep you here a little bit longer, because those grandchildren don't need you quite yet, but just, it's, that's all.
Any other comments on Zoom? Yes.
Yeah, no, I, I really want to actually just put it as a positive. I think Dr. Eng said, you know, she has, as you have said, she is a leader in our district. I think if she were to have anything negative or a concern of why she'd leave, she would be absolutely, speak up on that. So I look at this as a wonderful opportunity for her to enjoy her second half of her life. She deserves it because she has worked very hard within our district. I think she is a pioneer, she, and I love to use that word, but you have been around to establish amazing programs within the Methacton School District, throughout our county, and throughout the state. And you have truly been a role model for other districts to follow. So I am so proud to have been working with you. I think you will have a wonderful second part of your life, doing wonderful things with, with your family, your grandchildren. And I could only thank you on behalf of the board, the community, the families, and most especially, the children that you have really worked with closely. So thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else at the table? Any other questions or comments? Nope. Okay. Okay. Seeing none, then we will take this to a roll-call vote. Ms. Cancro?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
No.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
I'm a yes. So that motion passes 8-1. Thank you very much. And before we move on to the more routine things, I was in my tallies and roll-calls here and everything, but I want to congratulate Dr. Zerby on his new contract, his reelection. I want to congratulate Dr. Sergini on his assistant superintendent promotion, and I want to thank Dr. Engstad for all of her hard work for the district and to say that you will be sorely missed, as many have said this evening. So now we'll move on to 10D through, 10D through P. May I have a motion to approve items 10D through 10P as presented? Mr. Winters? May I have a second? Ms. Reese? Thank you. Any questions or comments on 10D through P? Ms. Reese?
Um, Dr. Sergini, it looks like we're in good shape. Where are we?
We're in good shape. I actually was able to just hire another teacher today, who you will see on the August agenda. And at the present time, we have one vacant contracted teaching position that we are in the process of interviewing for right now.
And I saw a few additional coaches. How many coaches vacancies?
We have a couple coaching vacancies, but we also just hired another one today, also with a letter that has been provided by the superintendent at the approval of the board. So we are in very good shape for the fall season as well.
And this might be a Mr. Regina, Dr. Sergini question. How are we on kindergarten? I know, for those unaware, those numbers shift. This board has a policy of a small class size, so that always causes issues, so.
So good issues.
Either way, we, we are within the enrollment standards at this point in time. You will see a, an advisement on the agenda this evening, moving a kindergarten teacher to a first grade position. We do have a large number of first grade enrollments that have come into the district, and we are addressing it that way.
Okay. Thank you for all your work. I know the summer is a busy time.
And, and just for the board's, uh, uh, reminder, uh, at the beginning of August, we then send out the, uh, report to the board. So you'll see all of the changes because mostly where we get jammed up and potential other decisions that need to be made are usually occur in August. So you'll be getting a weekly update on the enrollment chart for the elementary level.
Thank you. And I just love seeing the resignation and the approval of the new, um, teacher for Skyview Special Ed on the same agenda.
Very fortunate.
That's great, yes. Um, that's wonderful. Any other questions or comments? Anything on Zoom? Any, anybody? Okay. So roll call vote for items 10D through 10P. Ms. Kankrow?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that carries 9-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, for curriculum and programs, is Dr. Walsh.
Thank you, Madam President. Under 11A, the new curriculum in August, I will be seeking approval for the new curriculum for the 2324 school year, and it's the Science 9 to 12 Independent STEM Research. Remember STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. It'll be, this document will be available for review at the Farina Admin Building from July 26th tomorrow through April 22nd, 9 to 3. Anyone who would like digital access to the planned course document may also call the curriculum office, and we provide that to you. So there's no action under 11A. But under 11B, the revised curriculum, I'm seeking approval for the revised curriculum for the 2324 school year. The items for 1 through 10 are under the math curriculum review cycle. And these changes have been made to reflect the approved textbooks and resources. They're now included in the planned course documents, and you receive those copies ahead of time. So, um, under revised curriculum, those are the changes that I'm seeking approval for tonight.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve item 11B under revised curriculum as presented? Mr. McGinnis? May I have a second? Ms. Graff? Any questions or comments on item 11B? All right, roll call vote. Ms. Kankrow?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
I'm a yes. That motion carries 9-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have policy. Mr. Regina?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we have a number of items for second read for policy. We have no items for first read. Uh, we will see first read items again after our policy committee meeting in September. So the next group of items will be at the end of the September meeting. For second read, the only major change that we have in those items is controlled substances and paraphernalia, and specifically it references the off-campus activities. And it was aligning it to the student discipline, off-campus and activities language that we already have in, in the policies already. So that was the only significant change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the five items under 12B under second read as presented? Ms. Perdue? May I have a second? Mr. Ruckstall? Any questions or comments on policy? All right, here we go. Ms. Kankrow?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
I'm a yes. That carries 9-0. Thank you very much. Now we're moving on to other. Dr. Zerbi?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this evening, 10A, we, uh, have on the agenda the approval of the Recommended Organizational Chart Revision to take effect of August 1st, 2023. We have gifts and donations approved, a generous gift from Arrowhead Elementary Home and School towards an outdoor pavilion at a value of $30,000. We also have, under 13D, transportation approved, list of third-party transportation vendors for the 2324 school year. Uh, approve the transportation employee roster for the 2324 school year, and approve the bus stops for the 2324 school year as provided to the board, and approve the administration to enter into a parent-transport contract at the IRS rate for the 23 school year where appropriate. Uh, we also have the hiring of a school physician, approve the appointment of Dr. Jeffrey Brand as a school physician. Uh, Dr. Brand has been with the district for a number of years, uh, provides exceptional service to the district. And, uh, this is just a renewal of his agreement. Uh, next, we have the appointment of the PSBA delegates. Again, these two individuals, Kathy Cleary and Samira Perdue, have, uh, volunteered to become the delegates for Methacton School District. We could have up to a total of three. And that ends the items under other.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Does anyone want to take anything on other separate?
I'd like to take 13A separate, please.
Okay. We'll take 13A separately. Um, so then this is just 13A. May I have a motion to approve that under other as presented? Mr. McGinnis? And may I have a second? Mr. Winters? Thank you. So this is for 13A. Um, any questions or comments on the organizational chart? On Zoom? No? Okay. Um, all right. Here we go. Ms. Kankrow?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
No.
Ms. Reese?
No.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
And Mr. Winters?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries 7 to 2. Thank you.
Mr. Terman, did you indicate your vote for that item?
Oh, I'm sorry. My, I'm a yes. Thank you. 7 to 2. Um, all right. That passes 7 to 2. We will move on to then 13B through 13F. May I have a motion to approve? Mr. McGinnis? Second, Ms. Reese? Any questions or comments on 13B through F? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, so the generous gift is very nice, but the word that concerns me is toward. Um, so I assume that the $30,000 does not cover the total cost towards a pavilion. So, um, Dr. Zerbi, can you just speak towards how that would be handled? If that's something that is on our agenda or it's put over to the side until we're ready?
Yeah, we're, we're in the early stages of that discussion. In fact, the discussion with the, uh, Home and School occurred prior to Mr. Kenwood's arrival. I don't believe he's even gotten to the point where he's gotten intimately involved in the conversation. Uh, so we don't know what the full cost of this is. Uh, but, uh, we, we, we are confident that we can, uh, you know, have a, a conversation and keep that. It, we'll have to obviously go back to the board with what that, uh, you know, final cost would be projected to be.
Yeah, so I know this, this is probably not correct because maybe we're not thinking it through. Should we accept this gift when we don't know where the action, the action items it are going to be beyond it? I mean, if it turns out it's $130,000 to build a pavilion, we haven't even talked about putting a pavilion at Arrowhead at this point. So it's maybe unfair to the gifter, gifter? I guess is the right word? To, for us to accept this at this point because it, from my perspective, we don't know if this will be this year, next year, or 10 years from now.
Yeah, that's certainly a, a fair comment. Um, I'm just going to, to look and see. Uh, Mr. Kenwood, am I correct? You're not anywhere near. Okay, that, I just wanted to make sure. Uh, that, that might be a matter, uh, to, to put on hold or, 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 uh, not, not accept here this evening, knowing what you just mentioned. So that's a, that's a fair comment.
So we had the first and second, right? Already on the, the remaining items? Yes. So I'd make a recommendation. I know it sounds stupid, and I don't want to bound the, what's the gift horse or whatever the term is, but I think it's only fair to that person to understand that the district is not committed to a pavilion at this point.
Yeah, I, I actually agree with that.
So I, recommendation of the table.
Uh, was there any objection to pulling, um, item 13B out of the items of, uh, the other items that were up for this and taking that separately? Uh, then if there was a, if there is a desire to, to table that, that item could be addressed alone. Is there any objection to that?
I have a question. Upon hypothetically approving this tonight, does the $30,000 actually change hands? Do we take possession of the $30,000? Or is it just a, thank you? I think we're in the minutia land here right now, right? But if someone's out there, hey, we're working hard to give you $30,000, and they wake up tomorrow and somebody calls them and says, the board rejected it. You may never see that $30,000 again. So I, I hear you. But if we got to the point where the actual pavilion was rejected, I can only assume the $30,000 would be returned. That would work for me as well.
Is it possible to return the money? I guess the question is, how much of a challenge would that be?
Yes, it's possible to return the funds. The project was something we do not want to do, and it's not that big of a deal for us to return it.
Then I withdraw my request to take it off.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Liz? Yes. Yes.
For Mr. Winters' withdrawals, and I understand what Mr. McGinnis is saying, and, um, but is it possible that we could at least inform the gifter? Um, I, I do feel awkward voting to take 30,000, to accept $30,000 without at least explaining the process to the gifter. That's my hesitation.
What if, what if we amended the motion to, uh, accept the gift, uh, continuing upon the approval of the, uh, of the, of the pavilion by the board at a future date?
I can live with that.
That, that way, they, they understand that it's tied, it's, all that's tied together.
Yeah, I can look. I, I was trying to find a compromise there between what Mr. McGinnis was saying, what, and what Mr. Winters is saying, because I think they both have valid points. And I personally feel awkward, as I said, taking, accepting money that... I understand it's easy to give back, or we can give it back, but I, I still think we owe it to the gifter. It's a lot of money.
Okay, so is there any objection to the current motion that is on the, the floor being an approval of items 13B through 13F, with item 13B being amended, uh, to be that the, uh, approval is contingent upon the approval of the pavilion itself at a future board meeting? Any objection to that? Without objection, that, uh, motion is, is so amended.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? Yes.
Um, a couple things. Just wanted to thank Kathy Cleary and Samira Perdue, um, for going to the PSBA. Um, and, um, uh, Dr. Zerbi, could you explain what the school? I know we, I know we approve this every year. Um, but could you just explain what the school physician does for the district, please? Or somebody?
Uh, Dr. Sergini, would you mind?
On a limited-as-needed basis, he is able to provide, uh, physicals for students as needed. Also, he's able to consult on personnel matters as those come up as well.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? I also want to thank Ms. Perdue and Ms. Cleary for, um, their role as PSBA delegates. Okay, then we're ready for the roll call vote. Um, any, any other final questions or comments on Zoom? Okay, thank you. Um, all right. Ms. Kankrow?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
I'm a yes. So that carries 9-0. Uh, 13B through F with that motion as amended. Thank you. All right. We are now at dates for board members' calendars. Um, these are listed on the agenda and posted to the website. Any old or new business this evening? Seeing none? Um, all right. It's time for courtesy of the floor and opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments.
Jessica Bradbury, Lower Providence Township. I'd like to bring some concerns in front of this board about transportation services provided to non-public students. I recently completed the process to provide you all with proof of my residency so that the district will transport my daughter to her parochial school. However, this annual requirement was not something that we had to follow when she was enrolled in Methacton. So can you help me to understand why parochial school students are required to provide an annual proof of residency while students enrolled in the public schools are not required to provide that same proof? Isn't it more expensive to educate students enrolled in the district than it is to transport non-parochial students? Why isn't the district obtaining proof of residency for those students enrolled in the district, given that they represent a greater expense? I've emailed Dr. Zerbi twice asking this question and have not received any explanation. I would also like to better understand our transportation policy. Policy 810 states, quote, "Transportation to the non-public schools shall be provided on each day such school is in regular session according to its adopted calendar and its adopted hours," end quote. However, the district doesn't follow this policy as it's written. Instead, it only provides transportation on early dismissals for parochial students for the same number of days that Methacton has early dismissals. That is not adhering to the policy, which states that should follow the adopted calendar and schedule of the parochial school. So I spent some time, I called some other districts to find out how their practices compare to ours. Cheltenham Township, for example, their public school districts allow for up to 12 days of early dismissals, and that seems fair and appropriate. Methacton only provided transportation on two early dismissals this past school year for my daughter. So on all the other days, I had to leave work to go pick her up from school. I've contacted Ms. Graff several times, as she is the chair of the Transportation Committee, but she won't get back to me and explain why we're not, why we're not following our transportation policy as written. So I would appreciate it if someone could take the time to try to explain why the district acts in this manner. And I also ask that you revise your approach, and please increase the number of days[1701.46] the number of days that you provide transportation to non-public students for early dismissals. Finally, there are two board members tonight participating remotely. We know you have the technology and capability to do it. The Township Board of Supervisors allows people to comment from their homes on Zoom. You probably would have a lot more people here talking to you if you allowed for that. Maybe you don't want to hear from us, but maybe we could move forward and allow for Zoom participation going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Malik, War Sester. Ms. Graff, you had given us your little treatise on fiscal responsibility and prefaced that with the fact that you're the building person, and I do agree with that, but you are not the fiscal responsibility person. You just raised our taxes 3.1%. Millage increases are based upon what the budget is. So a percentage of 130 million is different than a percentage of 90 million. So you have to look at what the budget is. You never mentioned what the per pupil cost per year are here at Methacton, even though I calculate them at $24,700. And how many years we had budget surpluses? Every year. So you're raising our taxes every year, and you're ending up with a budget surplus every year. That is what, that's the antithesis of fiscal responsibility. Dr. Zerbi, I went through your contract, and I can't find any reference to your duties being using your position as superintendent to solicit donations from district vendors for supposedly independent 501(c)(3) organizations like the Methacton Education Foundation. I'm not sure I understand how that works. Before, I had read you an email that discussed the money solicited, and here's what it said. I want to pass along some excellent news I received from Dr. Zerbi. He met this morning with Fedavia, one of your big vendors, who you control their contract and their ability to make a living, to ask them to be a $15,000 sponsor for the dinner, and they agreed. Well, no big surprise. If my livelihood was dependent upon you, I think I'd feel a little pressure not to turn down your offer for a donation. But here's another response to this little email chain. It says, "Thanks, Dr. Zerbi. This is great news and a perfect example of how we need to leverage existing relationships." What does that mean? Leverage existing relationships? And that's, that's being made by a member of the foundation. Well, leverage means to make torque. Vendors for donations. I mean, would you, would you disagree with that characterization? People putting it in emails. I think you need to look into that. Thanks. Jim Beam, War Sester. I wasn't going to say anything this evening, but I think that several things have happened that I want to be very brief. Number one, I just want you all to know, I talk to a lot of people. You know I'm running for the school board, and a lot of people in the community are concerned about transparency. And I know that you are because I've spoken with a number of you, and you have mentioned that as well. But I'd just like you to take another look at the agenda and how you put the agenda together because people tell me that when they look at the agenda, they really don't understand what is happening during a meeting. And so whether things like the organizational chart or other things, and I mentioned at a previous meeting about, about some of the acronyms that we use. So I would just ask that you take another look at, at how you go about formulating the agenda with an eye toward the community so that the people out there have a better understanding of what is happening. Okay, it's just a suggestion. Number two, I just heard what was said and what was said earlier. I'm not certain whether that individual for the foundation was me or not, but as most of you know, and many in the community know, I've been on the foundation board for the last 10 years, and I was president for the, for the last five until a year ago, when Shannon Pfeffer took over, and he's doing a wonderful job. The Apex Award Dinner is the premier, has been the premier fundraising outlet for the foundation, and we have spoken with district vendors. We've spoken with community members. We've spoken with a number of school board directors. We've spoken with people throughout the community. Dr. Zerbi is a member, is an ex officio member of the foundation, so he's not simply the superintendent of schools. He's a participant and comes to our meetings, as many of his, of our meetings as he can. As Samira knows, she is the school board representative on the foundation and also a member of the foundation in that respect. So I, for one, don't have any problem at all with, with the concern that was raised by the other gentleman. In fact, I'm very grateful for what Dr. Zerbi has done. I do not see a conflict at all whatsoever, and I think what we need more of going forward is people from throughout the community coming together, working together, supporting the foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), what is a support organization for this district and has given over $1 million to this district. Without those funds, we couldn't do it. And I know I have two seconds, so I'll be real quick. The third and last point is, I know it's on a commercial, but Susan Angstat is a rock star. She has been fantastic, and Andrea, I want to thank you for all the comments that you made tonight about it.
Thank you for your comments.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Hello. Pooja Chanda, Lower Providence. I'd like to share some thoughts regarding the communications around the contract renewal and reorg. It would have benefited the community for this new structure to be a discussion of at least one work session, to allow the community time to understand the thought process behind the change, how it will function, the perceived benefits for it, and finally, time to process the information and ask questions. The need for communication around this topic has highlighted a greater frustration within the community. This frustration has fueled community discussion and online threads, which, due to a lack of clear explanation and discussion with the district, inadvertently leads to spreading rumors, half-truths, and opinions as facts. While in 2023, sharing of thoughts and opinions on social media is expected, lack of information from the district fuels frustration and sows lack of confidence in the district. Accountability is needed to ensure the district follows best practices to share information, gather and listen to community input, and respond to district questions. That's all.
Hi, good evening. Katie Thiel, Lower Providence. I did want to continue just what was previously said about communication needed for the district, and my hope is with the reorganization that was approved tonight, maybe this can, this will benefit and this will improve in the future. I think that will be a positive for our district. When I refer to communication, it's more than a newsletter, and it's more than an anonymous survey or a town hall that is very large. Communication and conversations need to happen in multiple levels of our district because there are people with real frustrations. So taking a look at the structure of our, of the communicating loop and the communications in the district would be beneficial, and hopefully, this new structure of administration will support that. When I say that communication, that those structures are needed and those conversations are needed, there are a lot of people who are very frustrated in this district. I can name a few of them because they have tried to share their frustrations and don't feel as though they are being heard. These people include, well, if I can give you an example, I know a lot of parents who've had to reach out to tutors and get tutors for their children when it comes to reading or math or science at many different levels. If I know five parents, four have had to get a tutor. If you want to know the impact and the effectiveness of your literacy program, how many of your parents have to get tutors? Because the tutors affect our PSSA scores and your benchmarking scores, but then you're having a lot of double duty, and that's important, and that's a great conversation to have. Another thing is, when it comes to the full inclusion model and how it's working in the district, ask your parents of students with IEPs how they're experiencing it. Some of them might be having a great experience, but if their student, if the supports they need were changed due to the shift, are they seeing positive or negative outcomes because of it? We have a great special education alliance. It's our great, it's a fantastic organization and model, and it's a model for other school districts. I hear from friends in other school districts about it, but they're strong for a reason, and why is that? What is, what need is it filling that the district, that they, that they need, they feel need to bring? These are just with parents. I really feel that communication needs to happen within the district, too. Do all, do all teachers feel comfortable bringing concerns, and do they feel listened to? And can they bring creative responses to administration so that that is implemented? Finally, I did want to say, I hope you have a wonderful retirement, Dr. Angstad. Thank you for everything you've done for the district.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor this evening? All right, seeing none. Any wrap-up comments from board members? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. McGinnis, may I have a second? Ms. Graff, thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.